Good evening to all, and thank you for joining our midweek service here at Kingdom Fellowship Christian Center. On behalf of Bishop Jim Logan, our senior pastor, and myself, Lady Cece Logan, and the KFCC family, welcome to you to our live stream. We are indeed grateful for your presence with us this evening. If you are joining us on Facebook, we ask that you would go ahead now and like our Facebook page, that is KFCC, and share the service with your social media friends. Also, go ahead and start a watch party. When you do this, it allows the gospel of Jesus Christ to be spread all over the world. If you've missed any of our previous services, whether on Sunday morning or Wednesday evenings, no worries. Service replays can be watched on YouTube, just search for Bishop Jim Logan's channel. While you're there, please like and subscribe. Thank you, and we appreciate your support. Tonight, we will be entering to the session eight on the study of the tabernacle. If you have missed previous weeks, we encourage you to check out our replays on KFCC Facebook page or Bishop Jim Logan's YouTube channel. It has indeed been an awesome study on the tabernacle and God's purpose for it and what it represents. So go ahead, grab your pen and pad for another service on the tabernacle. Our hope and prayer is that you have had a blessed week thus far. If not, please stay encouraged. God's word says in Jeremiah 1:9, "Have I not commanded you? Be strong and of good courage; do not be afraid, nor be dismayed; for the Lord your God is with you wherever you go." Know that we will be praying for you and with you. So at this time, we'll go ahead and pray, and the next voice that you will hear is that of Bishop Jim Logan. Father God, we just thank you, we praise you tonight. We thank you for what you've already done, oh God, we thank you for what you are doing. Oh God, we pray for those, oh God, who will be tuning in tonight, oh God, or even in the replay, Lord God. We pray that this word will be a blessing to them, oh God. We pray, Lord God, that this word will transform them, oh God, and they will come to understand you even the more, oh God. We ask that you would bless the man who will be bringing forth the word on tonight, oh God. Touch his mind, touch his heart, Lord God, let him hear from you, Lord God, ever so clearly, oh God. And Father, we will give you all praise, all glory, and honor. It's in Jesus' mighty name we do pray. Amen. Please receive Bishop Jim Logan.
Amen, amen, amen. It's so good to receive you tonight. We're grateful to God for your presence with us. This, as Lady Cece in her fine introduction has said, is our eighth session in our continuing study of the tabernacle in the wilderness. It's been very appropriate for us to have started where we did in the outer court. Unfortunately, so many Christians, that's where they enter into the presence of the Lord, but they end up staying in the outer court. But for the last couple of weeks, we have been in the tabernacle itself. We have been in the holy place. But tonight, we're going to go beyond the veil, and we're going to go into the most holy place. And in the most holy place, or in the holy of holies, as it is sometimes called, we see really only one piece of furniture, but we're going to deal with them tonight as though they are two different pieces of furniture. Because even though they appear as one article, they, in Scripture, are referred to very distinctly as being separate from the other, or different from the other, almost as if they are two different pieces. That is, the Ark of the Covenant and the Mercy Seat. What we want to deal with tonight, and I'm not even sure we'll get completely finished dealing with the Ark of the Covenant, but we want to start with the Ark of the Covenant itself. So on the screen, you will see a picture, someone's best guess of what the ark would have looked like. There's a lot of pictures that you can pull up on the internet. Some of them are very ornate, but really, somebody has said that it was a little more than a wooden box covered with gold. And so I like this particular image because it seems to represent that. So here you see the, and the picture says altar of the covenant, and I did that wrong. It should say Ark of the Covenant, A-R-K, but that's my mistake. With on top of it, the Mercy Seat, with the two cherubim, the wings spread inward over top of the Mercy Seat. Let's begin with some Scripture, Exodus chapter 25. We're going to begin reading at verse 10. "They shall construct an ark of acacia wood, two and a half cubits long, and one and a half cubits wide, and one and a half cubits high. You shall overlay it with pure gold inside and out; you shall overlay it, and you shall make a gold molding around it. You shall cast four gold rings for it, and fasten them on its four feet; and two rings shall be on one side of it, and two rings on the other side of it. You shall make poles of acacia wood, and overlay them with gold. You shall put the poles into the rings on the sides of the ark to carry the ark with them. The poles shall remain in the rings of the ark; they shall not be removed from it. You shall put into the ark the testimony which I shall give you." Now, that's where I want to stop there, there is more Scripture, but I'm going to stop right there because we'll come to the Mercy Seat later. But if we could move ahead, Minister Ruth, to Exodus 27, if you can see that. It should be a few slides. I want to draw your attention to Exodus 27, beginning at verse 1. "And you shall make the altar of acacia wood five..." Well, let's skip that because that's, well, no, let's continue to read. "And you shall make the altar of acacia wood, five cubits long and five cubits wide; and the altar shall be square, and its height shall be three cubits," verse 2. "You shall make its horns on its four corners," go to verse 3. "You shall make its pails," go to verse 4. "You shall make for it a grating..." Let's skip, this is about the altar, so that's the wrong text for this one. I apologize for that. But anyway, I've given you the passage of Scripture that gives you a biblical description of the Ark of the Covenant. We look at these two pieces of furniture, the Ark of the Covenant and the Mercy Seat, and we should note that God tends to begin where we end. So the very first pieces of furniture to be constructed were the ark and the mercy seat, because they were the most important vessels in the tabernacle. They were the ones to which every other piece of furniture had to reference. So the ark with its mercy seat, the mercy seat was the throne of God. And here, God focused His divine presence throughout all the years the tabernacle was in existence, and until Solomon's temple was built. Now, for the scriptural specifications, as we read to you, it was made of acacia or sheedum wood, and then it was overlaid on the outside and the inside with pure gold. It was two and a half cubits wide by two and a half, two and a half cubits long by two and a half cubits wide, by one and a half cubits wide and one and a half cubits high, or in our measuring system, five feet by three feet by three feet. Its top was surrounded by a golden crown, which held the mercy seat and the cherubim. In other words, there was sort of a crown or a ledge that went around it, and the mercy seat fit into that, so as they are carried it, the mercy seat could not slide off of it in any direction. And then it had two rings on each side, which made it portable. Inside of it, inside of it, there were four items that are of supreme significance for us. The first of those items is the two tablets of the law. Exodus chapter 24, verse 7, says, "Then he took the book of the covenant and read it in the hearing of the people; and they said, 'All that the Lord has spoken, we will do, and we will be obedient.'" So it was the two tables of the law. You know them as the tablets of stone, the ten commandments that Moses brought down from the mountaintop. They were inside the ark. The second piece that was in there was a pot with an omor. An omor is about two quarts, two quarts of manna. Exodus 16:33 says, "Moses said to Aaron, 'Take a jar and put an omor full of manna in it, and place it before the Lord, to be kept throughout your generations.'" Hebrews chapter 9, verse 4, puts it this way. "Having a golden altar of incense, and the ark of the covenant, covered on all sides with gold, in which was a golden jar holding the manna," and we haven't gotten to this, but the next piece was Aaron's rod, which budded, and the tables of the covenant. So the first was the two tables of the law, the second was the pot with an omor of manna, the third was Aaron's rod that budded. Now, I said there were four pieces in there, but that's where we divide the tablets. There were two tablets, so that gives you the four items. "Aaron's rod that budded," this is an interesting thing, Numbers chapter 17, verse 10. "But the Lord said to Moses, 'Put back the rod of Aaron before the testimony, to be kept as a sign against the rebels, that you may put an end to their grumbling against me, so that they will not die.'" We'll come back to the rod in just a little bit, and then, of course, what we just read, Hebrews 9:4, that refers to the three things, the tables of the covenant, the manna, and the Aaron's rod, which budded. What does all this mean? Well, spiritually, there's great significance here. First of all, in the materials, because the ark and all of its contents speak of Christ, preeminently of Christ, and if you will, His person and His work. How so? Because in no other article of furniture do we see the meaning of His person and work like we do in the ark of the covenant. The ark itself was, as we said earlier, read from Scripture, was made of acacia wood. And the fact that it was made of acacia wood, and you should remember this from other pieces of furniture, speaks to His perfect divinity. Remember that Jesus was at the same time fully God and fully man, so it speaks of His perfect divinity. It was overlaid with gold, inside and outside, and the fact that that happened speaks of the reality of His divine nature. Now, some would have a sub-belief that Jesus only became divine at the occasion of His baptism, when the Holy Spirit descended upon Him as a dove. But the spirit of truth, according to John, chapter 4, verse 2, "By this you know the spirit of God; every spirit that confesses that Jesus has come in the flesh is from God." The spirit of truth testifies not only to the preexistence of Jesus, but also to the manifestation of God in the flesh. So pure gold within and without emphasizes that He was not only perfect in His divinity, but also perfect in His nature. The ark was also surrounded by a gold, excuse me, a crowned of solid gold. We humans tend to crown Jesus as they did when He was crucified with thorns, but God has crowned our Savior with glory and honor. That's what the writer of Hebrews in chapter 2, verse 9, tells us. "By this you know the spirit of God," I'm sorry, Hebrews chapter 2, verse 9. What's that, that next text, is it missing from there? Okay, let me, let me read it. I'm sorry you don't have it in front of you. As I'm doing it, sometimes the texts disappear. Hebrews chapter 2, verse 9. Hebrews chapter 2, verse 9. Let me get that for you all, because I want you to have that and hear that. Everything is contained in Scripture, so if I can get my pages to stop sticking together, we'll be good. Here we go. "But we do not see Him who was made for a little while lower than the angels, namely Jesus, because of the suffering of death, crowned with glory and honor, so that by the grace of God He might taste death for everyone." So He is crowned with glory and honor, and then God set Him at His own right hand. The four rings and the two poles, they speak of His constancy and His availability to all the people of God. The four rings and the two poles. If we could go ahead a little bit, we should get to the poles, the rings and the poles. There we go, the four rings and two poles. Hebrews 13:8 says this. "Jesus Christ is the same today, yesterday, and today, and forever." Well, the rings and the poles speak, the rings speak of His constancy. There's no beginning and there's no end, and the poles speak of His availability. There's no beginning or end to the rings. It teaches us that Jesus is, as Hebrews says, the same yesterday, today, and tomorrow. The poles remind us of His word when He says, "I will never leave you, nor forsake you," because they were used to carry the ark. So the ark points us to our risen Lord as the Son of God and the Son of humans, or the Son of man, crowned with glory, ever living and ever present to all who call on Him. But now, let's go back to look at the articles that were inside the ark. First of all, I want to deal with the bowl of manna. The manna, in Hebrew, it means, what is it? In Chaldean, it means it is a portion. In English, it just simply means bread. But by whatever name, it was God's miraculous and bountiful provision for His people, not just part of the time, but for all of their days while they were in the wilderness. So Exodus chapter 16, beginning at verse 11. "And the Lord said to Moses, saying, 'I have heard the grumblings of the sons of Israel speak to them, saying, "At twilight you shall eat meat, and in the morning you shall be filled with bread; and you shall know that I am the Lord your God.'" "So it came about at evening that the quails came up and covered the camp; and in the morning there was a layer of dew..." Praise God, my lavalier went out, sorry about that. "When the layer of dew evaporated, behold, on the surface of the wilderness there was a fine flake-like thing, fine as the frost on the ground. When the sons of Israel saw it, they said to one another, 'What is it?' For they did not know what it was; and Moses said to them, 'It is the bread which the Lord has given you to eat.' This is what the Lord has commanded: gather of it every man as much as he should eat; you shall take an omor apiece, according to the number of persons each of you has in his tent. The sons of Israel did so, and some gathered much, and some little. When they measured it with an omor, he who had gathered much had no excess; and he who gathered little had no lack; every man gathered as much as he should eat. Moses said to them, 'Let no man leave any of it until morning.' But they did not listen to Moses, and some left part of it until morning; and it bred worms, and became foul; and Moses was angry with them. They gathered it morning by morning, every man as much as he should eat; but when the sun grew hot, it would melt.'" Numbers chapter 11, verses 1 through 9, we read these words. "Now the people became like those who complained of adversity in the hearing of the Lord; and when the Lord heard it, his anger was kindled, and the fire of the Lord burned among them and consumed some of the outskirts of the camp. The people therefore cried out to Moses, and Moses prayed to the Lord, and the fire died out." So the name of that place was called Tabera, because the fire of the Lord burned among them. "The rabble who were among them had greedy desires; and also the sons of Israel wept again and said, 'Who will give us meat to eat?'" "We remember the fish which we used to eat free in Egypt, and the cucumbers, and the melons, and the leeks, and the onions, and the garlic; but now our appetite is gone; there is nothing at all to look at except this manna. Now the manna was like coriander seed, and its appearance like that of bedellium. The people would go about and gather it, and grind it between two millstones, or beat it in the mortar, and boil it in a pot, and make cakes with it; and its taste was as the taste of cakes baked with oil. When the dew fell on the camp at night, the manna would fall with it." Now, John chapter 6, verse 31, says this. "Our fathers ate the manna in the wilderness, as it is written; he gave them bread out of heaven to eat. Jesus said to them, 'Truly, truly, I say to you: It is not Moses who has given you the bread out of heaven; but it is my Father who gives you the true bread out of heaven; for the bread of God is that which comes down out of heaven and gives life to the world.'" "Then they said to him, 'Lord, always give us this bread.' Jesus said to them, 'I am the bread of life; he who comes to me will not hunger, and he who believes in me will never thirst. But I said to you that you have seen me, and yet do not believe. All that the Father gives me will come to me, and the one who comes to me I will certainly not cast out; for I have come down from heaven, not to do my own will, but the will of him who sent me.'" So the manna speaks of Christ as the bread of life. Even Jesus Himself likened Himself to the manna. So what do we learn about the manna? Well, the first thing we learn is that the manna was small. Exodus 16:14 says that it was small, and that speaks of the humility of Christ. "When the layer of dew evaporated, behold, on the surface of the wilderness there was a fine or small flake-like thing, fine or small, like the frost on the ground." Philippians chapter 2, verse 7. I don't know, did I put that one up? Let's go ahead. We also see that it was round. It was round. It said, the roundness speaks of the perfection of Christ. The smallness speaks of the humility of Christ, not humanity, humility of Christ. The roundness speaks of the perfection of Christ. So again, back at Exodus 16:14, we read those words where it says that it was a flake-like thing, fine as the frost on the ground. This particular translation doesn't say round, but another translation says that it was round. And then John, chapter 1, verse 14, tells us, "The word became flesh and dwelt among us; and we saw His glory, glory as of the only begotten from the Father, full of grace and truth." But further, it was white. It was white. So Exodus 16:31 says, "The house of Israel named it manna, and it was like coriander seed, white; and its taste was like wafers with honey." And that speaks of the holiness of Jesus. Hebrews chapter 7, verse 36, we read, 26, rather. "For it was fitting for us to have such a high priest, holy, innocent, undefiled, separated from sinners, and exalted above the heavens." That's the holiness of Christ. It also says in Exodus, and we won't go back and look at that text, but you know, we've read it twice. It talks about frost, but in one translation, it calls it whore-frost, not W-H-O-R-E, but W, but H-O-A-R. And that speaks of the freshness of Christ. Why? Because that frost, it came at night and was there in the morning, just like we see it now. So that speaks of the freshness of Christ. John chapter 6, verse 63, we read the words. That was not there either? John 6:63? All right, let's go further. "It was like coriander seed," it says it was like coriander seed. We saw that in Exodus 16:31. Is Song of Solomon 1:3 there? Because Song of Solomon tells us, speaks of the fragrance of Christ. So coriander seed speaks of the fragrance of Christ. It was, color was white, but then it also had a particular fragrance. Numbers, I'll keep going. Numbers chapter 11, 8, says that it had the taste of fresh oil. The people would go out about and gather it, and grind it between two millstones, or beat it in the mortar, and boil it in a pot, and make cakes with it; and its taste was as the taste of cakes baked with oil. So it had that taste of fresh oil. That speaks of the authority of Christ as the anointed one. Exodus 16:31 tells us that it was like wafers made with honey. And we looked at that already, coriander seed, white, its taste was like wafers with honey. And that speaks of the sweetness of Christ. Is Solomon, Song of Solomon 2:3 there? It speaks of, "Like an apple tree among the trees of the forest, so is my beloved among the young men; in its shade I took great delight and sat down, and its fruit was sweet to my taste." And then it had the color of bedellium, the color of bedellium. Now, we don't recognize bedellium today. That's not a word that, a precious stone that we know, but perhaps bedellium is the same thing that we know as barrel crystal. And that speaks of the preciousness of Christ, the preciousness of Christ. And so we read in Numbers 11:7, "Now the manna was like coriander seed, and its appearance like that of bedellium." Do I have 1 Peter 2:7 up there? This is the, this precious value, then, is for you who believe. But for those who disbelieve, the stone which the builders rejected, this became the very cornerstone. So all those different things is how the manna is described. But let's go a little bit deeper, because also of the manna, we find that it was a sufficient provision. It was a sufficient provision. God provided manna for His people throughout the entirety of the forty years of their wandering. And so it was truly the bread of heaven that never failed. Look at Exodus chapter 16, verse 18. "When they measured it with an omor, he who had gathered much had no excess; and he who gathered little had no lack; every man gathered as much as he should eat." Amen. Go ahead and say it, because I couldn't read that. Okay, all right. It was also a satisfying provision, a satisfying. So it was first of all, a sufficient provision, but then, secondly, it was a satisfying provision. "It tasted to every person as he pleased." Now, we talked about this before, that if whatever you were craving, if you were craving the melons and the leeks that you enjoyed back in Egypt, the manna tasted like that. It suited every palate, the palate of the young and the old, the weak and the strong. It, this was truly a miraculous thing when you consider that there were 2.5 to 3.5, that depends on how big, there was millions of people there, and yet the manna satisfied everyone's taste. So it was sufficient, it endured throughout the forty years, but it was also satisfying. And then, third, it was a sustaining provision. It was a sustaining provision. Exodus 16:35 says it this way. "The sons of Israel ate the manna forty years, until they came to an inhabitant land; they ate the manna until they came to the border of the land of Canaan; so the manna was provided for them every morning that they came out of their tents, until they finally came to the border of the land of Canaan, and that's when it stopped." So the nutrition in this bread from heaven must have, it had to have contained all of the required vitamins. You know, we're living at a time when everybody has the right kind of vitamin that you need, and we see it advertised on television. But this manna, it had to have contained all the necessary required elements, vitamins, for it maintained the strength of this nation throughout the forty years of their wanderings in the wilderness. throughout the 40 years of their wandered wanderings in the wilderness. So in this, we find our sufficiency, our satisfaction and our sustenance. Look at John, chapter six, verse 51. Jesus said, I am the living bread that came down out of heaven. If anyone eats of this bread, he will live forever. And the bread also which I will give for the life of the world is my flesh. Lady Cece, how many minutes have been, we've been going now? Does it say? Thirty minutes. This is shorter than normal, but I'm going to stop for tonight. For me to, to, to get onto the, to the rod is probably going to take me another 15 to 20 minutes. And so I'm going to stop right at this particular point. And I hope that you receive what's being said here. Because Jesus is everything that we need. We should find in him that he is sufficient. We should find in him that we are satisfied. We're not looking for anyone else. And we should find everything that we need to be sustained in him. Amen? Well, I want to offer you an opportunity to sow and to give unto the Lord. And once again, if you've been with us every week, you're very familiar with our methodology of giving. We have the GiveLify app and you can use that. We are listed as Kingdom Fellowship Christian Center. It's on your screen. Be sure that you are hooking up with us so that your gift will go to where you intend it. You can also give securely through PayPal. We're listed the same way, Kingdom Fellowship Christian Center, Charlotte, North Carolina. Or you can give through the Cash App and we are dollar sign Kingdom Fellows. That's dollar sign Kingdom Fellows. However you give, we thank you for your giving. God is going to bless you. What you give helps to sustain us and advance the work of this branch of Zion. And so we're grateful. I want to pray for you just before we end. And whatever your concern, whatever your need, know that God is able. And I thank God for the sufficiency that we have in prayer. God is a prayer answering God. We don't pray to idols of stone or precious metal or of jewels. But we pray to a living God who the songwriter said is in the world today. And he hears and answers prayer. So Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for the privilege of prayer, the opportunity of prayer. And we thank you for the effectiveness of prayer. We thank you that you have told us that the prayers of the righteous are powerful and effective, that they avail much. And so God, we come and we combine our faith tonight with all those who seek you for whatever issue, for whatever concern. We pray for those who are sick in their body, that you would release healing upon their bodies from the crown of the head to the soles of their feet. We pray for those who are bound up and we speak deliverance now in the name of Jesus. We pray for those who are walking through lack, that they might have everything that we need. And we pray, oh God, for those who are lonely, that they would know you and the free pardon of your sins and know that you are a friend who sticks closer than a brother. We bless you for that. We pray for every concern that your people have. Specifically tonight, we lift up Dr. Strange and her entire family. Lord, you've raised her up multiple times. We ask you to raise her up again and do it for your glory. Lord, I counted not robbery to bring before you my sister and, and my cousin, oh God, who have struggled through sickness. And Lord, we thank you for what you have done in them now, oh God. We ask you to do it again, to bring them up, oh God, that they might know you and serve you even the more. And we bless you for it in the name of Jesus. We pray for family tonight. I pray for my family, for my children. I thank you for our new grandson. And I thank you, God, that you bless that family abundantly in Jesus' name. I thank you for the fact that Minister Ruth's brother is back with her now. We pray and speak peace upon him. And we pray for provision in his life. We pray for healing in his life. And we give you praise, honor and glory for it. Lord, we thank you that you hear us when we pray. And so we call it done right now in Jesus mighty name. Amen and amen. Well, God bless you, my sisters and my brothers. Thank you for joining with us tonight. Please look for us again. If you cannot join us in person on Sunday morning, we will be back on Facebook Live at 10 a.m. and by delay on YouTube. But for tonight, we say thank you for joining us. You can come and be with us at 2929, 2925 East Independence Boulevard in the Jones Building on the second floor. And we will look forward to welcoming you then. God bless you and may the Lord be with you. Good night.